My computer. Okay, so Ian, so what is the concept that you guys know of when it comes to equations and gradients and tangents? What is that concept that I sort of used to? You alluded early on, but I wanted more refined.
The derivative of a graph
Yeah.
Is equal to the tangent to the point.
Gradient of the tangent?
Yeah.
Okay, so the gradient of the graph is the same as the gradient of the tangent at the point of contact. Okay, so now what is the gradient of the tangent?
Fifteen.
The gradient of the tangent is fifteen, and we know the gradient of the tangent is equal to the gradient of the graph. What is the gradient of the graph?
That's
Two P X plus Q.
Because you're finding the derivative. Now, what is? What else can I do here? They say, when does this happen? When is the graph equal to, when is the gradient equal to fifteen?
At X is equal to three.
At X equals three. So therefore, what can we do? We can sub in X to be three. Ian, does it make sense?
Yes.
So that's your first equation. What else do we know about the tangent and the graph?
Um, the point X is two twenty seven is also the point on a graph.
Yes, because doesn't the tangent intersect? The graph? So therefore, they share the same point. You guys agree? Yes, Ian? You agree that they
Perhaps I repeat that.
So if I have a parabola, the tangent is going to cut the graph somewhere, right?
Yes.
So that point, they, they are the same point.
Yes.
So you can put the two graphs equal to each other. You see?
Yes.
So that's another way. So what is the equation of the, of the tangent? It's, it's fifteen X minus eighteen, minus eighteen. And the equation of the parabola is P X squared plus Q X. So it's going to be fifteen X minus eighteen equals P X squared plus Q X. Doesn't, doesn't make sense, Ian?
Yes.
And, and at what X value does this occur? When do they equal each other?
At three.
At X three.
So we, so we can sub in three. So it's fifteen times three, which is forty five. It's going to be, it was P X squared, so it's nine P plus three Q. Forty five minus eighteen is twenty seven. Great, twenty seven. And are you guys comfortable with simultaneous equations?
Yeah, that's fine.
But do you see, Ian, it's, it's just, it's, you need two pieces of information. You want to, you had the right idea that you need simultaneous, but in order to get a simultaneous, you need two pieces of information. And the two pieces of information is that the tangent's gradient is the same as the graph's and the intersection at the same point, do you see?
Yes.
Okay, so Chris quickly solving this. I would multiply the top equation by three. So it becomes eighteen P and fifteen times three is for forty five. Then I would subtract them. Forty five minus twenty seven is twenty eight. No, it's eighteen, sorry. Eighteen equals nine P and the Qs cancel. So I'm using something called elimination. And therefore, P equals two. And if you split in, what else do, what do you get for Q? Three. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Anybody have any questions about this? Particular question? Now, Ian, have you gone through the bank on tangents and calculus?
Not for that section.
So this, I actually recommend, if you see, look, there's quite a few questions on tangents and functions. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There's seven questions, Ian. So there's a lot of things that you can practice just to help you understand, okay? And it's video solutions. Okay, so I want you to go through that, okay?
Yes.
Okay. So let's look at, now she's done up. You sent me, you sent some very nasty looking identities. Nafisa?
Yes, I tried doing it, I couldn't.
Okay. Does anybody have an idea what we could do? It's not an easy question firstly. This is, that's why I think you guys in your book, you have that star, right? What is that? Isn't that star supposed to mean that it's difficult?
Yeah, that's a challenge.
Challenging, yeah.
So, yeah, so.
Well, cos two X is an identity.
But what did I tell you guys about cos? Leave it for lost.
Yeah, oh yeah, because it can be changing to three. Okay, that's sine for X.
Can you, can you change sign for X into something that looks quite nice?
For sine A. Wouldn't it be two sine two A cos two A?
Yeah, so it's, if you guys know your double angle identities, so if you've got, it's just going to be two sine. And remember, guys, if I say anything that doesn't make sense, this is an open session. If you want me just to repeat something, okay? Is everybody clear on this so far?
Yes.
Yes.
Still doesn't look like we're getting anywhere, but we're just
I have a question, but it's really like, just a general question. Can you take sine, sine cubed X plus cos cubed X and then say, make it into sine squared X plus cos squared, x into sine X plus cos X? Was that wrong?
That is not how you would factorize it, but you, you are on the right track. Do you guys recognize this as something that you've done before?
No.
Okay, so, and
Compound angle for cos.
No, no, not even compound angle. The last one.
Yes. I'm kidding about, yeah.
Right, now what is the rule? Who remembers what is, what is X squared, X Q plus cosine? So let's, let's take this and move it to that side. Okay, what's X Q plus Y Q they go to?
Oh, you were telling us about this last week.
Did I? I don't know. So, anybody know? Anybody know? I have X Q plus Y cubed.
Would it be? Why?
Somebody said something?
Say, well, there'd be two brackets, right? So
Yes, yes.
Sine X plus cos X.
Okay, but just, just do X Q plus Y Q first, so we, just so we know that.
X plus Y.
Hmm.
And then X squared. And then it'd be Y squared on the other side, but then something in the middle, I can't remember.
What's in the middle?
Can it be a magnet?
I don't know, I think.
Oh, I remember, I remember, isn't it? Would it be? X squared minus X Y plus Y squared? In the
Wait, no, plus X Y, minus X Y.
Hmm. Need to make up your minds.
Minus X.
Minus X Y.
Is minus X Y.
Is it minus X Y minus two X Y?
Minus two X Y.
No, just minus.
No, it's minus X Y. It's always
Minus X Y minus two X Y.
Minus X Y. Why? Then plus two Y.
No. Why? Wouldn't it be Y squared, not two Y?
No, I'm, is it, I'm asking the middle term, is it X squared?
Yeah, it's minus X.
Minus X.
X Y.
X Y.
Okay. Okay. Because, and then this term can't be factorized. Now let's apply that to this. Okay, so we've got four.
Sin X plus cos X.
Yeah, so this is all going to be in one bracket here. So it was four times that sine X plus cos X.
Into sine squared X plus sine X
No.
Cos X.
Not, not
Oh, sorry, minus.
X.
Plus cos squared.
What can you do immediately?
Um, identity, make it go to one.
Yes, so then you could get one minus sine X cos X.
Yep.
Even that is equal to one, oh no, it's not, sorry, it's not.
Okay. So let us look back at the left hand side. If we can look for some inspiration on the left hand side. What can we do on the left hand? Oh, somebody have an idea?
Take our cos two X, and then you get four minus two sine two X.
That's a good idea. Cos two X or two cos two X?
Oh, two cos two X.
That's the highest common factor. What are you left with?
Two minus two sine two. I mean, just two cos, two minus two sine two X. Just sine two X, sorry, sorry, I don't know why I'm getting jumbled.
Which is the same as what? Can, can you, can you simplify this? Sine two X.
Oh, wouldn't it be two into one minus two into one minus sine, sine X, cos X?
Okay, you're jumping a step. What did you do first?
Um, I first convert, you first convert sine two X into cos X sine X. I mean, two sine X cos X.
Two.
Stand in the back by the wall, please.
Okay, so what are you going to do next? Man?
Then you take out the two and it become one into one minus, one, two into one minus sine X cos X.
Doesn't that look? Okay. We're getting there, we're getting, enough, so you see we're getting there. Okay, okay. So you're taking the two out, so it becomes one minus sine X cos X. And then, don't you agree, we can just make this four cos two X, because it's just multiplied by two? Do you see that?
Yeah.
So then it becomes two cos two, four cos two X. And this is all over?
Cos X minus sine X. Oh, and
We only
I'm gonna suggest something.
Yes, please suggest. I hope you, I want you, this is the, this is the point of these sessions, is that you guys must be thinking and telling me what you guys think.
Um, can you change cos, cos two X into cos squared X minus sine squared X and to cancel the bottom?
Why would it, okay, you're right, but just explain why you have
Because they're both have cos X minus sine X. So cos, cos squared X minus sine squared X or minus, I mean, cancel.
So, so you, you saying that cos two X is cos squared minus?
Cos squared X minus sine squared X.
And then what are you going to do from there?
Um, then I take away the denominator, because if you divide it, then you, I don't know how to explain it.
Okay, but before you, you can't just divide it, you can't just divide it like this. What must you do first?
Oh, change it into cos X plus sine X into cos X minus sine X.
Isn't this difference of two squares?
Yeah.
Do you guys see? So it does create some more space here. Cos two X is just the difference of two squares, actually, if you think about it. Anybody lost? Everybody following?
I'm lost.
Okay, are you, are you happy with us saying four cos two X? That's what we add, right?
Yes.
Now, do you agree that cos two X is cos squared minus sine squared?
Yes.
Now, isn't cos squared minus sine squared a difference of two squares?
Yes.
So how do we do difference of two squares?
Open bracket and then plus in the one and minus in the other one.
So like X plus Y, X minus Y. So the same thing here. So it's going to be four cos X plus Y, sine Y, sorry. Four cos X plus sine X, and then the other brackets.
Cos X minus sine X.
And then we go to what Iman said.
Cancel.
Which leaves us with four cos X plus sine X times one minus sine X cos X. And this will have you know that is what we got on the rights. So.
Okay, I have a question. So for the denominator, right? Could we rationalize it and then it would give us two brackets also? Like how we have it on top and then we would end up with cos two X and then we could cancel the same way, right?
Exactly, exactly. That's another way of doing it. Because now you, you would multiply, what would you multiply but this cos X minus sine X by?
Cos X plus sine X over positive.
Right. So then that will make this, that will make cos two X times cos X plus sine X. The cos two X now cancels, which leaves you with that. But I mean, this is a more higher order question. I mean, this is not like, it is, they would be, it's, but do you see? Okay, my question is to you, this is a higher order question. Do we do any new maths?
No.
No.
But the trick was, you had to know what the sum and difference of two cubes are. Do you guys see that? You guys see that?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
And look at the grade that they taught you there.
They did.
You see, so that's why we gave you these, this concept map, so that you guys can go back and just revise these things. Because as you guys have just, you guys prove it to me. I don't have to prove it to you. You prove it to me every week that the questions that you're asking me, they are, then many of them draw back from previous grades. Because if you didn't know what the sum of two cubes, you would not answer this question. Do you guys see that? If you didn't know what the sum of two cubes are, then you could not answer this. Do you see that?
Yes.
He is.
Okay. Everybody happy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's do the other one. Okay.
Mine is so much simpler comfortably, oh my gosh.
It's fine. Okay. It's good to have diversity. It's the reinvenation. So, okay, let's look.
I couldn't find textbook one, I'm sorry. But I basically don't understand why my answer is wrong. I just got confused as I was doing it.
What is, what is the question?
Um, you just have to find the derivative. Um, but I just wanted to ask beforehand.
I can't hear you. Your mic is one mute. Man?
I'm sorry, sorry. Is it okay if you would, I was just going to ask beforehand, is it okay if you would first convert, I guess, your, your, your places where you have X, for example, first saying three X squared is equal to nine X squared, and then what? And changing all of those Xs and then flipping the fractions and all of that?
No, no, you must first simplify the fractions and then take the derivative. Okay, since you must first, so the first step is write it in a nice form and then take the derivative. And also just remember, Iman, what you're saying here is Y equals, and you're just saying equals, 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 and then you take the derivative. So now you're saying Y equals the derivative, but you might rather say?
At D Y of D X. I did actually, but I did this thing over like four times, I kind of got tired by the thing.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let me write it out. Okay, so it's two of, okay, so two over three Y equals two over three X cubed, great. Minus five X to the seven over seven plus three X over root, sorry, cube root of, sorry, the square root of X cubed, great. So the first step, the very first step, the very first step is you simplify. You don't take the derivative of this. It's too, it's, it doesn't, it's just not in the right form. So what can we do to simplify it? Does anybody have ideas?
We can say Y equals two, two over three X to the power of negative three for two over three X cubed. And then for this, okay.
X, X to the minus, you're right, first time. X to the minus three.
The second one
Do you see that, Iman?
Can just say
There's
Yes.
Okay, yeah, second one, yeah, what's the second one?
We can say minus five over seven X to the power seven.
Great.
We separate them. And the last one, we can say plus three, three X over X to the power three over two.
Good.
To simplify the denominator, which is cube root, which is
So it's X to the three over two, that's you just writing that in the, no, I'm not, I'm not, that's going on the, three X over X.
Three to the power, I meant X to the power three over two.
And then how do you deal with that? What can you do now? Have you
We can, we can Isn't it?
What's the rule?
When dividing, when dividing powers
What powers?
When dividing
Anybody want to help?
But you just when dividing powers with the same base, we minus the
Exponents.
Yeah.
Right, so this is one. So it's going to be minus three X to the one divided by X to the minus two. So what's my, one minus one, three over two?
It's negative half.
Happy guys?
Yes.
Do you guys see it's, it's a lot easier to take the derivative now?
Um, I have a question, but it's like a very silly question. Um, how, how do you know whether your, if you, when you're sorry, with your exponent would go to the bottom or the top? So for example, if I have X three over two, right? Then not always would my, like, how would you know when you, when you still have an X left at the bottom is my question? Does that make sense?
Um, no, because this is in the denominator. So before we, I just simplified that. That on its own.
No, I think she means like when you take that X over and you make the exponent negative. So how do you know when you need to do that or when you just subtract it? I think you can do both, because you'll, you will end up with the same answer.
Okay, so, okay, Iman, okay, so wait, do you agree this is X to the nought?
Um, my, my question actually is like, not like for this specifically, it's like a general question. Um, I, I think I'm having a blunt moment, but, um, so for the, for three X, so for example, if I have three X squared over, say, X is two or X to the five or whatever, then how would I know if I still have my, uh, oh, I, never mind, I'm sorry, 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 I understand now, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm, I was basically confused, as for example, if you have three X squared over X to the five, then how would you know whether you'd end up with a a single answer that doesn't have a denominator? But the answer is just if it's positive, it will have, it will be on top.
Yeah, I mean, this would just become three of X squared, which you can write as three to the X, three of X cubed, times X to the minus.
Sorry.
Okay, no, 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 it's good that you're asking these questions, because you know, yeah. So, okay, so how can we, we're going to do the derivative, Iman, we're going to do the derivative for this one? So it's going to be D Y by D X, right? Let's say D Y by D X.
And then would it become negative one over negative?
Negative two.
Hmm, yeah, it's gonna
Wouldn't you say, wouldn't it become negative six over, over nine? So do you, till the three, I mean
No, just, no, it's, it's negative six over three. Because you just multiply
Oh, multiply, oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, so you multiply by the exponent. So negative six over three, which is minus
Two.
Minus two right, times X to the power of minus.
Uh, then that would become negative five, so positive five. Not negative five, sorry.
Not negative five? Minus four. This is minus three.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay, so you're going to multiply by the exponent and subtract by one. Trying to do the
So, sir, so, sorry. Um, when we, we say power multiplier with the coefficient power minus one to get negative four.
Yes, yes. And if you just want to have, if you, you're not sure, just there's this video here. The quick way to find the derivative. And then also, Iman, I want you to, on the bank, you'll see that there's a derivative section. Do you see all this? Iman, do you see it?
Yeah.
So I want you to, if you're still not sure, work, work through some of these, and then you've got the video next to it. And then you can see if it starts to make more sense. So like, we've done some of these in the live sessions, you see her? This was one, somebody, I think, Amad or us this one a few weeks
It's traumatic, probably.
Yes, yeah, so, so there's lots of practice for you guys to, to go through. Okay. Good.
I think it's, it wasn't necessarily the actual, like, finding the derivative, that was like, leaking me out was more, um,
The algebra.
That I didn't, yeah, like, I'd convert, like, converting, it's where I got like, kind of messed up, please.
Yeah, so I mean, that's why I say, you know, in the trick, they don't teach you algebra. You guys, you guys know that, there's no algebra in the trick. There's no algebra in the trick. But there is a lot of algebra from previous grades. So for example, just knowing how to simplify, look here, simplify exponents. There's your one, Nafisa. Rationalizing the denominator. Rationalizing the denominator. Simplifying powers with fractional exponents, that's what we're doing now. Iman, simplifying powers, but this is grade ten. So, and then, okay, that, this is not so important. And solving simultaneous equations, we've done. And of course, the, so there, there's a lot of stuff in algebra that, that you've been accumulating over the years, but it's good to go back. So I would recommend maybe some of these, these ones. And then, of course, there's a quiz on, on exponents, okay? There's a quiz on exponents. In fact, we are busy making the system a bit better. And we could hopefully release it sometime soon, so that it's, everything that you have is a lot better in terms of accessing the different resources, because I know it's a lot of stuff that we give you. So we're trying to make it easier for you guys to, to see. Okay, so, yeah, so your question, Iman, I think, is this, is this from the twenty, twenty fifteen post paper?
Um, no, it's actually from our textbook. Oh, no, 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 wait, no, that one is actually, yes, it is, yes, it is.
Because that was what I got in my exam. So, and yeah, I remember that. I did actually make a video on that one that I can send to you. Um, okay, so let's, let's just do this one. What is this one going to be? Minus five over seven times x to the power seven, how are you going to do this one?
Plus six.
Yes. Negative five x to the power of my, oh, six. And then the last one?
Wouldn't be one over negative one x to the power of negative two.
No, so you multiply the exponent by that. So what's, what's off, what's minus off times minus?
Four x.
No, no, three over four, three over two. Does it make, does it make sense? It goes minus three.
Oh, sorry, yes, three over two, yeah.
Iman, does it make sense?
Um, yes.
It's okay to say no if I can explain to you.
Wait, um, which, why would negative three times one over three become three over two?
No, it's minus off, it's minus one over three, it's minus off. Okay, maybe, okay, maybe that's why. Okay, so if it was minus, if it's minus off, then becomes.
Minus three over two.
Positive, three over two, because it's negative times negative. Okay, negative times negative. Guys?
Yes.
Negative times negative is positive.
Yes. Okay, it's the derivative. Is it clear for everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
In fact, just, let me just see if it is the, your question, it was trigonometry. I think it might be. So it's a similar question. They signed, yeah, that was twenty fifteen. Um, sine theta equals a third, you're one saying, sine theta equals x. So, can we still do it? Let, let us, let us, first, let us, we can still do it, actually.
I don't mind, I'm doing the, watching the video and then trying to then asking again if I need to.
Just thinking. How many questions do we still have?
It's just my other question that I sent, and that's all, so we can do.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Let's do. Okay, we can. Okay, so what did you look at when you did this one, Nafisa?
I was breaking up both sides, but I didn't, it didn't give me the right answer. Yeah. Side, the left and side, and the right and side, so.
Which one do you, would you start off with, you think, maybe?
Left and side.
I would start with the right hand side.
Because we can do that.
Because I, because I, I know what, there's only, there's only one thing the right hand side can be. Because it's sine double angle. Do you agree? Nafisa?
Yes, yes.
So what is the, the sine double angle for sine eight?
Is it two sine four theta cos theta?
Two sine four theta cos theta, right. Cos four theta.
Yeah.
Hmm, what, 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 what do you guys think next?
Even.
Are, are we going to do this cos four theta? What did I say to you then?
Leave it lost.
Leave it lost, leave it lost, always leave cos for lost. If you have something else that you can do, do that rather. What else do we have?
I don't think you need to simplify that side more, because when we do the lift, you get a similar answer.
Yeah, but I want, I want to start here, because let's just see what, what we can simplify this to. Sine fourth, which of, which of these terms would you want to simplify?
Change four theta, the sine four theta.
Yes, yes, yes. What is sine four theta, if I that?
Two sine two theta cos two theta.
Cos two theta.
Yes, 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 yes. Two, but it's, it's going to be two times two, so it's four, right?
Yeah.
Four. Four sine two theta, you see it's starting to come. Cos four theta.
Yeah.
Next? What's next? What are we going to do next?
Can't, can't we simplify the cos four theta?
What did we say? What, what did we say? We leave the cos for lost.
For lost, so you can break up the sine double angle into.
Yes.
Hmm. Two sine theta cos theta.
Times four is going to be eight. Sine theta cos theta. Cos.
Oh, and we did it.
Yeah.
Why was that so easy? Okay.
So do you guys see how, what, what was the rule I taught you?
Leave cos for lost.
Leave cos for lost.
Cos for lost. That is my general rule. Because can you imagine if you, if you did cos? How difficult do you become? So, because the problem is, because cos has three different possibilities, it doesn't make sense to me to do that first. Rather do the ones which only has one possibility, and that is sine. Do you guys see that? Sine only has one possibility. So, and, and of course, they wanted cos, so I knew, let's leave the cos. Okay. Could we do it in reverse? The, Nafisa wanted to start on the left hand side, could we do it in reverse? What is, what is eight sine theta cos theta? Can we simplify that?
Wouldn't it be four sine two theta?
Four sine two theta.
Basically, it's.
Two theta, because what, what, what can we do next? What can we do next?
The sine four sine two. What's another? Comparative.
What's the reverse? Who's going to tell me the reverse?
Two sine.
Not two sine. In the sign, in the sign two theta. Okay, do you see how it's more difficult in reverse, but.
So that one would be four.
If you multiply this by. Hmm? Yeah, it's going to be four, sine four theta. Because if I, if I multiply this by two, then I have to multiply that by two. Do you see that?
Yeah, I do.
So then you finally have, Nafisa, four sine four thi- forty, four theta, times cos of four theta, so what is that going to do with?
Eight. Sine eight. I mean, sine eight theta or something, right? Um. No, it is sine eight theta.
Sine eight theta.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hmm. Did we make a mistake here? I mean, uh, early on, no, okay, that is right, sine eight theta. Okay, so you could do it both ways, but you see how doing it this way is faster, it's easier.
Wait, I think you did.
Did I make, I did make, like, I think I did make a mistake.
Isn't it two sine four, because I have two sine four theta, because the two we have blue, yeah, because two times four is eight.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. Um. Yeah, it goes down, not, not, not up, yeah. We still have time, Iman, do your question? Can do your question? They, did somebody, or the other questions, meanwhile? Let's look there. Okay. Another video I want you guys to watch, has anybody watched this video? Has anybody watched this video? Has anybody watched this one? The first one?
Oh, with the units, yeah, I would watch it.
How did you find it?
I think it was really interesting. Interesting to see like where it comes from. My.
Okay. Because this is not in your syllabus.
Yeah.
But we still wanted to make a video because.
You told us to watch it when we were doing the one day, and then I went to watch it.
Yeah, so do, do you feel like you understand it better now?
Hmm, definitely.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. So let's go to the question. Sine theta equals x, right, sine three theta in terms of x. So when I saw this in my exam, I actually panicked a bit. Because I've never seen this, um, before. So I thought, you know, do I have to invent new max here? But I did actually get it, but I think it's, I was just nervous in the exam, but, um, so does anybody have an idea before I tell you what I did?
Can you start by saying sine two theta plus theta and what from?
Yes, that's, that's what I did. Okay, yeah, Iman, what do you say?
Um, I expanded it into sine two theta cos theta plus cos two theta sine theta, and then that looked way too long, I could have to solve it, so I just.
Oh, I don't know, I, I'm saying do this. Did you do this?
Yeah.
What did you do?
Sine two. I expanded it, sine two theta cos theta plus cos two theta sine theta.
Sine is a cos theta. Right? Plus cos two theta. Sine theta. Also, I don't know if you wanted to draw a triangle.
That sine theta is x.
Do you see?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, so that actually turned out simpler than expanding this, because that's actually what I ended up doing, and it was so long, I thought it was.
No, no, we still have to expand, but what I'm saying is, when we get to cos theta, we can sub in this. Okay, so, um, sine two theta becomes two.
And then you times it with cos theta and it's cos squared theta.
Good, and then the next one, so now what do we, which one do you think, does it matter which one we change cos to now?
Um, yes, no, because you can eventually change it into the other one, but wouldn't it make sense to, to change it to the one with sine theta, because you have a theta there, I mean, a sine there.
Yeah, yeah, you have a sine, but it doesn't actually matter because you've got the triangle. So if you've got a cos, if you've got a sine, you know how to deal with it now. Okay. Does everybody understand the triangle?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, cos two theta is what? So we can, you, Iman wants to change to one minus.
Uh, two sine squared theta.
Times sine theta, good. And then this becomes?
Two sine.
Si- sine theta. Minus two sine cubed. So it's two sine theta. No? Oh, it's because. It's not. It's not me, um, okay, so is everybody happy with this?
Yes.
What can we, what, so now, so, so now it's a lot easier, because they're asking us to write in terms of x. So if sine theta equals x, we can now start subbing in. So, so it's going to become two x. What is cos squared theta if we use the triangle, Iman? Man, what is, what is cos squared theta going to be? Man.
I'm sorry, my mic was muted. Um, it'd be one minus x squared rooted, and then over one, so just be one minus x squared root. And then, um, because it's.
But it's square, yeah.
One minus x squared.
Yeah, one minus x squared. And you see how much, how it's becoming much easier now? Plus x.
I think.
Minus two, and then sine of theta is x, so two sine cubed is going to be two x. Squared. Okay. And then we can simplify, maybe, you guys want to simplify?
I'm the. It'll be negative four.
Hello, 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 yeah, you can hear me here.
Yeah.
I put the. Minus two x cubed. And then there will be three x. Two x, x, yeah. And then minus two x cubed, minus two x cubed would be minus four x cubed.
Yeah.
Plus three x.
And that equals what? That's sine three theta. You see?
Yeah.
How do you know that that's like your?
From school.
What do you mean? Say again, Iman?
Okay, okay, never mind, I got it, thank you.
Kabira, you said something? Kabira? You, you say something? Kabira? Okay. Um. Okay, so sine three theta equals that. Now it says here, show that sine ten is a root of the equation. Now, what does that mean that it's a root? What is that?
It's an answer to that, to that equation.
It's an answer to the equation, great, correct. Now, my, so my question is. How can we? How, it says hence, so what does hence mean?
You have to use the information you found previously.
And what's the information we found previously, it's this.
Oh, wait, you have to just find the, use general solution kind of, and then find it, no.
Because it kind of, kind of, I don't want this kind of, I want. I want a rational explanation as to. Anybody have an idea? It's not an easy question, but there is a, is a way to do it. They're using the word hence for a reason, and when they use hence, it means.
Using.
So this is what you came up with.
Somehow use this equation of minus four x cubed plus three x, but I'm just not sure how. Wouldn't you, wouldn't you say, well, it's negative, so wouldn't you say that, would you take it as negative, because your, your highest thingy is negative?
What you mean as negative?
Is it negative, positive, like in terms of, oh, never mind, sorry, 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 it's positive, so it would be, and I have the first quadrant to the second quadrant. So you could say, if you use the first quadrant, you'd say, four x. Power of three plus three x is equal to. Three theta plus k into three sixty, and then you work from there. Somehow.
Tell us this is a root of that equation, they want you to show that sine ten is a root of this equation, Mike, so you have to find a way to connect that to this.
He's good, minus four, you see?
Uh?
Oh, would you, would you, would you say negative four x cubed plus three x is equal to ten? And then.
What do you mean, no, 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 no.
No, no, okay, never mind.
Yes, you can't break it up. Sabika, you've been quiet, do you have any ideas? Sabika?
Yes.
You've been a bit quiet, do you have any ideas?
No, I'm not sure.
Now, Iman?
No. Oh, wouldn't you, oh, I'm sorry, but if it's a root of the equation and x is equal to sine three theta. Then you'd have to say x, x, eight x. The minus six x plus one is equal to the equation we found previously. Where x is, and then.
So how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you connect this to that? Because you have to, you want to solve this, right? You want to solve this, am I correct, you want to solve this, because you want to show that sine ten is a root, what is, what is root mean? By the way. It's an answer, so we need to show that sine ten is one of the answers to that, but we have to use this, so now my question is, how can we connect this equation to that? It's not easy, but there is a way.
I think you'll find a way to factorize.
Yes, 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 you're getting there, getting warmer.
If you factorize it, then you will get some, this minus four x cubed plus three x. And let me just work it out.
You nearly there.
Okay, I'm not sure how, but I know that you have to factorize it, and then we'll substitute it with sine three, sine three. And then we'll do, okay, I'm not sure.
The giveaway for me, okay, can I, can I, is anybody else anything?
Can you feel like it's related, because.
It is related, that's what I'm saying.
And the three and the six.
Yes, so what's the factor? What's the factor? It's divided by two, right, okay, you're seeing that, but is it divided by two, are you sure?
No.
It's divided by negative two.
Divided by minus two, yes. It's divided by minus two, so if I say minus two.
Okay. She's always just so excited.
We'll be, we'll be sine three, we'll be sine thirty, so then.
Wait, no, wait, 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 because go slowly, go slowly. I hope you don't like this in the exam.
She is exactly like. Wait, wait, I should check if I'm right before I embarrass myself.
Now, Iman said you must factorize, she's right, now how do we factorize it?
I got so excited, but it doesn't work.
Is any ideas? Please? Please, any ideas? Alia, any ideas? Sarah, your mic is on.
Okay, so.
I have no idea.
Naima?
Yeah.
You said something?
I'm thinking that maybe we take out negative two.
Yes, now, yes.
Negative two into negative four x. Cubed. Plus the x. And then. Oh, no, that doesn't work.
Taking out negative two, you have to take it out from the three.
Um, if you. If you make it into negative half and you get sine thirty. The.
How do we get the negative, we must get, we must get the, maybe we must get to that point first.
We just don't know how to factorize. No, um, we're trying to factorize at the moment.
Um, are you grouping?
Grouping, somebody said grouping, Sabika, explain, are you under the grouping?
No, the two x plus the x in one group.
And then. Two x plus the x, with the two x and x.
Can I, can I ask something?
Sure.
Um, as, as, this is my thing from earlier, and then I got confused and I came out wrong, but basically, if you do, if you take that first, that equation in the question, eight x, the power of three minus six x plus one. And you divide the entire thing by two, and then you make it equal to, and then you take the one over and you get, it'll give you a negative half, and then you can make that into. Sine thirty, and both of them will be equal to sine theta.
So you're basically doing the same thing, because, let's, let's just summarize what she's done, she's taking this equation and dividing it by two or minus two.
Minus two.
Dividing it by minus two, what is it becoming if she divides it by minus two?
Minus four x.
Minus four x cubed. Plus three x.
Plus three x cubed.
Minus of.
Minus one over two.
Equals zero. But what did we say, minus four x cubed plus three x is?
Uh, sine.
Sine three theta. And then sine three theta minus of equals zero, what is that, how can we solve that? Equals.
Take the half over to the other side, half. Equals a positive half.
What's the answer to this equation? What must theta be?
Ten.
Ten.
So you've shown.
There is cluster train.
You've shown that in order for this to be solved, it must be sine of ten. With the wow.
I'm going to use now also, and I like.
I'm just sitting there like, okay, what's next?
Okay.
Is that the answer?
Okay, no, good.
So you just had to show that, so cool.
Oh, it's quite a lot of work that we did there, but, so I mean, okay. So if sine theta, you're right, sine ten. So sine of three times ten is sine of. So I've signed in. Inside of, a sign of three times ten is sine of thirty. Do you agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if I say sine of something equals of, what's the answer?
It just equal to ten.
Yeah, so if you add sine of ten. As the root. Then it will be sine of three times ten, which is.
Oh, I get it.
Sine of thirty. But sine of thirty equals a half. Therefore, sine of ten must be the root.
I did not understand that.
Anybody, did anybody understand it?
I understand it now.
But.
Okay, wait, can I try explaining it?
Yes.
Basically, we found out that sine three theta is equal to sine ten in this context. Okay, so basically, because we found out that negative four x the power of three plus three x is equal to negative half, which is equal to sine thirty, that means that. Now, I'm.
I did, I think I did actually. Let's see, I did actually see. Make a video on this as well, that I can send, maybe I think I used a different technique. Does anybody, sort of, is it clicking with anyone, what I said?
Nope.
Okay.
From this step, negative four x cubed plus three x minus half. I was having nitpick problems, so I couldn't hear you quite well.
Just trying to find if I made the video on that. Okay, it's not here. Okay, so do we agree that minus four x cubed plus three x equals sine three theta?
Yes, yes.
Right? They are asking us to show that sine ten is a root of the equation, that's the equation, so we have to use this, so what Iman did was she divided this equation by minus, by minus, by minus two. And you can do that, because it's able to note. Do you see?
Yes.
Can do that, so what happens when you divided by minus two?
You'll have minus four x cubed. Plus. X minus half square root of zero.
And what is minus four x cubed plus three x?
Is equal to sine three theta.
We've shown that, great, so then sine three theta equals a half.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so, so, so basically. Another way to show it is, do you agree that. Sine ten is actually. Fits in here, because isn't sine three theta equal to something times x? Do you see that, guys?
Yeah.
X equals sine. Theta. So therefore. Sine of thirty. In fact, I think this is a better way of answering this, if we apply that identity that we've established, is minus four sine square, sine. Ten cubed. Plus three sine ten. Do you agree? Sine of thirty.
I don't understand.
Good, I'm just subbing in. Theta. Do you guys see that?
Yeah.
Ten. See, what do you see that I've done? Guys?
All right. Yeah.
So therefore, sine thirty is. Is equal. To something with sine of ten.
Yeah, I get it now.
So since we are showing. That. You've got sine of three theta equals a half. And isn't, isn't a half just sine of thirty, yeah, sine of thirty. And you've got minus four sine ten cubed plus three sine ten. So, in other words, let's put it this way rather. And I know it's difficult, it's not, I mean, this is not a standard question, they're saying it's equal to a half, but isn't a half sine thirty? Do you agree?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're saying that all, sine thirty is equal to that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So therefore, sine ten is part of the solution, it's, it's, it's. If I were to say minus four sine. X. Plus three sine x. Then what is the answer for x, it must be ten. To satisfy. Which means that sine of ten is a root. It's an answer for this question.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's like. Yeah, okay.
In fact, actually just ignore the first part. I think it's actually wrong of me to say that because of sine ten and sine thirty, it's better to say. Let me just summarize what we've done, just to make it easier. Is everybody happy that this equals sine thirty?
Yes.
We then incorporated sine three thirty, sorry, three theta into this equation over years, everybody happy with that?
Yes.
So therefore, sine three theta equals a half. Which is sine thirty. And we need to show that sine ten is a solution to this equation. But I've just shown you that sine of three theta is equal to minus sine three cubed, x cubed plus three sine x. And. Since sine thirty. Equals sine of three theta. And sine of three theta equals that. That means that this has to be sine of ten. Because this is three theta.
Um, in the exams, if, I may ask a question.
Yes.
In the exams, if you had.
We should explain this.
By saying, sine thirty is equal to sine three theta, and then said three theta is equal to thirty, and then said theta is equal to ten, like as in divided by three, like isolated the angle, and then say theta is equal to ten, therefore, would they have accepted that, would that be acceptable?
You see that, that's showing that it's ten, but it's not showing sine ten. So, what I'm trying to say is that. The, the solution. You know, you say, I mean, let, let us actually just do it like this. Let's do it like this, we said that sine three theta. Is minus four x cubed. Plus three x, right? Equals sine three theta. Do you guys agree?
Yes.
But we're saying that sine three theta also equals a half, which is sine of thirty. Does everybody agree? Hello?
So sine three theta, sine three theta costs you two things. Costs to a half and negative four x cubed plus three x.
Yes, yes. So. What must? Theta, what is theta equal to then?
Ten.
Theta equals ten. Which means that this will be minus four. Um. Sine. Theta cubed plus three sine. Sorry, sine ten cubed. Plus three sine ten. And therefore, sine ten. Is the solution. To that equation.
Oh, my word, oh.
Maybe that's a better explanation.
That makes sense now. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not easy. It's a easy question. Yeah, are there any other questions? Is everybody happy?
Nope.
Yeah.
No, thank you. Those are.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
My iPad actually froze, but I think it is the end of the session. Um, are there any other, any other lost queries before we?
Nope.
Guys are happy? You guys write this week, right? These, some of people.
Uh, yeah, we write next week.
Is it on trig?
Um, yeah, on trigonometry calculus and.
And.
Three D triggs and inverse graphs and inverse functions.
Okay, so. Yeah, you must watch the concept videos and then go through the bank. When you're studying the night before, just go through the bank.
Okay.
Because then the bank, you've got question, and if anything else, it doesn't make sense, then you can message us and we'll. Help you.
Thank you.
You see the new system? It's like it's more conversational. I don't know if you've used it yet. Um. Yeah, anyway, I'll see you guys next week. Are you guys fine? I, I, I thought, I thought Friday would be more people, but it seems like it's still the same.
Yeah. Um, maybe some people.
Twenty-one people.
Yesterday, I asked, how many people are coming? And then sixteen people said they were coming. So I thought.
Today, I seen it was like twenty-one.
The twenty-one responses.
Hmm.
And seventeen said they were coming, twenty-two responses. So I thought like there would be more. But anyway, I'll see you guys next week. Okay?
Hi.
You. Okay.
Bye bye.